Good evening and welcome. I will now call the Yakima City Council Study Session of May 13, 2025 to order. Thank you. We'll start with roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
Dicio.
Here.
Glenn. Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Tonight we will allow 15 minutes for public comment. You have 15, you have, I'm sorry, 2.5 minutes to speak. When you come to the microphone, please tell us your name and the city in which you live. I also need to read this tonight. State law prohibits electioneering at city council facilities during public comment. Speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose ballot measures in any upcoming election. All right. First tonight is Dennis Elliott.
Can I go over here?
Yes.
My name is Dennis Elliott, and I'm a somewhat involved with the trolleys and the maintenance department. And would just like to tell you a story. I was over there at the Trolley Barn one day, and we were working on the compressor out of the Little Red Trolley. And there were a couple guys that showed up that were out searching historic railroad stuff. And they showed up, they didn't even know we were here, but they accidentally, they found the bridge that went to Seela and goes, this must go somewhere, and they tracked it back to the Trolley Barn. And I think they were from like Pennsylvania, one of them was from Pennsylvania, and the other one was from like Arkansas or something. I don't even remember, but they were from clear across the country, and they've been all over the, all over the country looking at stuff. They told us, I mean, they were totally impressed. And they said, this is the best electric railroad museum they have ever seen. And the trolley, like, I just want to advocate for the trolley because the trolley has already given up the line that went way into Seela and also the Nob Hill Line, which was in the past the best view of the Condon Castle that you were ever going to get. If we pave over the existing line, we kill a piece of history and a local attraction. And I don't know if it would ever come back. I'd love to see the trolley stay and be supported and maybe even expanded to go clear out the Moxie. I would love that. So, thank you for your time and listening to my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next is Casey Kisser.
Good evening. My name is Casey J. Kisser, and with the exception of five years on active duty in the Navy and three years in Alaska, I've lived in Yakima all my life. And I also volunteered with the trolleys a long time ago, and I had a lot of fun. And I would, I would advocate for keeping the trolley, for the history, for the uniqueness that it gives us here in Eastern Washington. And the tourist dollars it can bring in, that could always, that can only be a good thing. And it was, it was a piece of history. I used to, I used to do the cashier in the barn sometimes. I get to, I would get to fire up the belt-powered conveyor system that still, that they were able to mill their own parts. I can't speak to the, what conditions it's in now, but it was impressive that they were able to mill their own parts still just by pushing a button and having this, having this little belt system fire up. And it's something really, really unique, and I really, really believe we need to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kisser. Next is Ken Johnson.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council and city staff, I'm Ken Johnson, President of Yakima Valley Trolleys. The idea I would like to discuss with you tonight is something that I think everybody can get behind, which is what we want. We don't want to lose the railroad, but we want to move forward. And my idea is, we've been talking about this full-meal-deal reconstruction of the railroad and the road and the William Waduggos Trail and everything, like, we have to do it all right now. And I really believe this is something that could be done in phases. It's something that if we looked right now at the real needs, and I can speak for the railroad, I can't speak for the other, but as far as the railroad is concerned, just taking care of the real needs. And our need is to be able to go back to Seela. Right now, we have a crossing from the Central Washington Railroad that was removed last year. That has to be rebuilt, but that's like $290,000. We have some work that needs to be done on the bridge, according to Bill Preston. We were able to get a grant for that that covers 100% of the cost of that, so that can be taken care of. If we start with little things like that, I think that we can do the thing that I think is probably most important to all of you, staying within the budget, and that's, that's the biggie. And time is on our side. I believe within the next 12 months, we will become a national historic landmark. And with that comes federal funding possibilities, excuse me. And I think that will help to eventually be able to do the full type of work that we want to do. But let's don't throw the baby out with the wash. Let's take care of what's needed now, and we'll do, everybody will do fine. And that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. You can hold the sign up, but you have to be silent. Thank you. All right. Next is Eileen Kane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I came to speak in support of getting the best line for the trolleys. This is something we really need as a city. It is our heritage, and it also pays us back in tourism. Many of you may not know about rail fan communities on YouTube and elsewhere, but Yakima is very popular in these places. We could even put up a cam for the trolleys. People would watch it. They would subscribe to it and pay for it, and it could be monetized that way a little bit. And then, of course, people come from all over the world. When I came here, it reminded me of the cable cars from San Francisco where I grew up. And the first time I saw them, they were going by, I lived at the Fifth Avenue Apartments. I looked at the window, and I grabbed my kids, and I said, you won't believe this, kiddos, look at this. And I was crying because I was very homesick when I came up here as a young domestic violence survivor. And these trolleys, we would go every year, once or twice at least, and ride them, and my kids got to drive them. Later, my mom and dad came up here to visit us, and my stepdad had the dream of a lifetime driving the trolley. It was just so special. I turned it down because if something could go wrong, I would be at the wheel. But I loved them, and they're such a wonderful part of Yakima. And it just wouldn't be the same without them. Thank you, and I hope that you think about that.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Next, we have, please don't clap. Thank you. Next, we have Charles Chesney.
My name is Charles Chesney. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. If I was to be completely brief about it, complete streets need rails and trails, and we want to keep Yakima history alive, please vote yes for the trolley tracks. As a rail fan and cyclist, I believe in complete streets, multimodal streets. The trolley serving Seela and Yakima is an important element of our cultural identity. The trolley is a treasure with broad appeal across our communities. The Sixth Avenue rebuild and rail renovation project is essential to preserve this treasure. Please fund Project 2796, keep the trolley resource alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chesney. Next is Chad Tiffany.
I do like all the little trains.
I do, too. We see them. Trust me, that's better than the yelling. We see the signs.
Don't yell at us.
City Council, Chad Tiffany, I've been a resident here for about 30 years now between Seela and Yakima. And when I lived out in Seela, I never really knew we had anything. But when I moved over to Yakima, then, you know, we, we went with my kids and stuff and had taken them. And it was really a good learning experience of what Yakima grew up doing, you know, from all the, all the fruit agriculture and all that stuff. And anyway, I like the longer ride that we can, you know, get. And we get more information from the conductors and everybody that, you know, rides it. And I think that's good for our children to grow up, knowing these types of things that the city had to go through and the contributions that it made to help Yakima grow. And I just love seeing the old stuff anyway myself. But anyway, thank you so much for your time, and I just want to say my support for having it available. I don't go a lot because I'm pretty busy, a couple jobs and stuff like that. But when we do, we would like the extent of, you know, into a different city. And even if it expands into Seela more, that would be miraculous. I would love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiffany. Next is Luis Lopez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Luis Lopez, and I'm a resident of Yakima District Number One. I had the opportunity to attend the 2025 Homeless Housing Strategic Plan Session Number Two. And it was clear to me that we, the city council, and we, the residents of Yakima, are going to have to take care of our homeless issue. It was, to my understanding, the objectives of the county is to find affordable housing, not to remove homeless people from, from our streets, which is, yeah, their objective is very commendable. You know, they talk, their data supported that we lack affordable housing in Yakima, and that's, that's great. But we still need to address removing, you know, the people in a dignified way, in a humane way, remove homeless people from our streets. And I am looking forward to working with you in finding ways and options on how we can address that issue for the benefit of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Next is Ron Torres.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Do we have time for two left or just one?
We have time for two, really, yes.
We do, okay. Then I will go ahead so we can get Shelley in. And I'd like to pass these around, everybody. If you could, thank you so much. I'm Ron Torres. I'm a citizen of this wonderful city. And last time, we looked at the Department of Commerce's assertion that developers might be the ones coming to buy your yard to split it up and build duplexes and triplexes on the new subdivided segments of your previously single-family neighborhood. Although there are total, are local individuals and smaller developers that will be acting in their own interests under the new housing laws, larger developers don't act by themselves. They are generally subsidized by institutional investment firms, Wall Street or shadow bankers. Those are actual terms. What is a shadow bank? Normal banks usually have to operate with plenty of scrutiny from financial regulators. Shadow banks, often known as non-bank financial companies or institutions, can usually operate with little to no oversight from banking regulator, regulations and regulators. Examples of shadow banks include hedge funds, private equity funds, mortgage lenders, and even large investment banks. The shadow banking system, including Bear Stearns and Lehman Brothers, played a major role in the 2008 and still ongoing financial crisis. Even so, the new banking regulatory laws do not affect them much, and shadow banking has grown exponentially in size and largely escaped government oversight since then. According to, well, let's see, in the past few years, the residential real estate market has seen a significant influx of investment from these large corporations significantly reshaping the residential real estate market through their substantial investment and strategic operations, goals and strategies. Their influence extends to and beyond property ownership, impacting market dynamics. They, they work for low supply, home prices going up rapidly, and rental rates also increasing rapidly using their control algorithms. It's a science, folks. But who are the largest shadow whales affecting real estate? These are names you might recognize. Black Rock, Vanguard, State Street. Let's take a look at the largest, Black Rock.
Mr. Torres, your time is up.
My time is up. That's great. And may I just silently say?
Next is Shelley White.
Good evening. I'm Shelley White, citizen of the city of Yakima, here tonight as a private citizen and not a member of the Planning Commission. Black Rock's total assets under management is a record $11.5 trillion as of the first quarter of 2025, more than doubling since 2016. This makes Black Rock the world's largest asset management company. The majority of Black Rock's AUM is in equities, but it holds significant real estate assets. Black Rock doesn't directly own individual houses. Rather, it invests in companies that own and manage real estate, including single-family homes. While Black Rock doesn't directly own many homes, it's heavily involved in the real estate market through investment in mortgage securities, multifamily properties, and equity stakes in real estate companies. Why are these investment shadow whales so interested in residential multifamily real estate? Something happened in the last five years that greatly challenged the whales. Number one was COVID. COVID decimated commercial portfolios held by the whales that contributed heavily to the dividends produced to pay their clients. With those revenue streams dried up, alternatives had to be found. If you can't produce profits from rental commercial, then you need to convert commercial to rental housing and add more rental residential real estate to produce the same or bigger repeat dividend returns for your investors. And number two was China. Black Rock was among the largest holders of bonds issued by Evergrande and Country Garden, the two giant Chinese real estate developers that went bankrupt in 2023. They built endless empty cities because of their, their struggling population, and they couldn't sell them. Black Rock had a significant exposure to both developers' debts. So here's Black Rock's own statement about its current real estate holdings in response to increasing criticism of its role in real estate acquisitions. Bottom line, they quote, "Black Rock is an active investor in the U.S. real estate market, which, but we are not among the institutional investors buying single-family homes." And I said, "more than a little misleading as they own shares of most of the biggest companies that do buy single-family homes." "We provide capital for new housing construction to developers. Most recently, we began investing in new construction, purpose-built for rent housing developments. Additionally, Black Rock invests in multifamily properties, apartment complexes, and other residential real estate." So, should we be worried?
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
That's okay. That's for next time.
Thank you so much. Oh, we love it. Next is William Longmire.
We're out of time, but I don't know if you want to see if we want to just keep going.
We only have two others, or actually, one other. Would we be?
We also have three online.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine.
Consensus to listen to them?
Sure.
Sure.
All right. Then we will do, we'll move ahead with that. Thank you. William Longmire?
Madam Mayor, city council members? My name is William Longmire. I'm a GIS analyst. I am also a Seela resident and a member of the Seela City Council. I'm here tonight because the decisions before you has serious implications, not just for Yakima, but for the entire region. I am currently working and assisting with the National Historic Landmark nomination for the Yakima Valley Trolley System. And a deep, it's a system with deep historical and cultural value. It connects Yakima and Seela and runs through the Sixth Avenue Corridor, an area your own historic preservation element identifies as historically significant. Only one of the three proposed designs removes the trolley tracks. That, that option directly contradicts your adopted policy in the historic preservation plan to protect and preserve unique community features such as the Yakima Valley Trolley. That design, in my opinion, should never have been on the table to begin with. Cities across the country are investing in new rail systems and electrification. Yakima already has the infrastructure in place. Rebuilding the Sixth Avenue tracks as part of a modernized corridor is not only possible, it's practical. I see it all the time, you know, every time I go to Seattle, I see harmony between the roads and the tracks and pedestrians and bikes, they all come together, and it's, it's possible, and why can't we have that here? So, it allows for better integration with, you know, road maintenance because the way that it is now, I'm sure Public Works doesn't like it. I mean, there's a lot that goes into the way that it exists, so rebuilding it, modernize it, really can make it more easily to maintain in the future. But removing the tracks could also disqualify the Yakima from historical preservation and transit-related funding, making the remaining design options more costly than they appear. So what I'm saying is, like, if you guys tear them out, I mean, it's a historic landmark as it is, but if you take it, take that out, you're going to foot the bill yourself. You're not going to get the funding from the state, from the feds. So, this isn't about transformation, it's about honoring the policy and protecting regional heritage, investing in a more vibrant, connected future. Please preserve the tracks and choose a design that respects what makes our cities, not just Yakima, but Seela as well. And something that I grew up with, something that my kids took a part in. It's, it's really a piece of all of our histories. You can't look at a historic photo of Yakima without seeing trolley tracks in it. You know, they're everywhere, so.
Your time was up, but thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Beeler, do we have anyone online who'd like to address the council this evening?
Yes, Mayor Byers, we have Greg Johnson, who is being promoted to panelist. And in a moment, I'll be able to turn on his microphone and his camera and provide comment.
Hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yes, we can see you.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and thank you so much for extending the public comment period on this. I really appreciate that. Thank you for hearing the public out on this one. We talked a lot about the economic benefits of the trolleys, you know, visitors and all that stuff. What I wanted to try to do right now is put a finer point on it. I brought some numbers to bring to the conversation. First, on the tourism benefit, it's particularly strong when we're, when the trolleys are operating to Seela. We did an analysis at one point when we were running trolleys to Seela, and 51% of the riders on the trolley at that time were coming from outside of Yakima. So these are visitors who spend dollars at local businesses, they boost tax revenues, and generally contribute to the local economy. We also get a large number of international visitors. We have many members in the trolley organization who have made not just one, but multiple trips to Yakima specifically to see the trolleys. So it's a big draw even for international tourism. And all of this stands to grow substantially as the trolleys are designated as a national historic landmark. National historic landmarks are featured on the National Park Service webpage, and they're very prominent in terms of tourism and travel. Second benefit I wanted to mention is the volunteerism benefit. The trolleys are run by a very lean, mean, volunteer-led organization. Our volunteers log thousands of hours every year, improving the trolley system, enhancing the value of the city's asset, and that's, it's not insignificant. So consequently, when you crunch the numbers and look at the operating cost of the trolleys, it happens actually, I had a point in my career where I worked in municipal finance, so I cracked open the city budget here, and it turns out that the trolleys are actually one of the cheapest amenities that the city of Yakima offers. On a operating cost per customer served basis, the trolleys cost about half of what lines pool costs to operate. So it's actually very economical, thanks to the volunteers who contribute their time to the trolleys. Lastly, I wanted to mention the grant funds that the trolleys bring into Yakima. We did a quick calculation of at least $1.7 million in recent years that have been brought in in grants. These are funds that get spent hiring local contractors and supporting local businesses, not to mention enhancing the value of the city's asset. And again, that would also be enhanced when the trolley has become a national historic landmark. So thank you very much for the opportunity to bring these facts and figures to the conversation. I wanted to mention, I think that you've been handed a PowerPoint deck with, has, okay, great, thank you.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Beelers or someone else?
There is none, Madam Mayor. Those are all of the online folks who are actually online at the moment.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, council, for allowing us to do that. That's the end of public comment for this evening. We're going to move into our study session items. And item A is that, is the National Salvation Army Week Proclamation, and Councilman Glenn is going to read that. And Lisa Sargent, would you come forward, please? Lisa is the executive director of the Salvation Army here in Yakima.
City of Yakima Proclamation. Whereas the Salvation Army Yakima Valley Corps has served the community since 1894 and is one of the most trusted nonprofit organizations in America today, and whereas the Salvation Army Yakima Valley Corps exists to meet human need wherever, whenever, and however we can, and whereas the Salvation Army Yakima Valley Corps provides an after-school program, youth scout program, summer camps, gifts and food provided at Christmas, daily food pantry throughout the year, clothing and household needs, and we are dedicated to combating intergenerational poverty through an initiative, Pathway of Hope. And whereas the Salvation Army the Salvation Army and international movement is an evangelical part of the universal Christian church, its message is based on the Bible, its ministry is motivated by the love of God, its mission is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and to meet the human needs in His name without discrimination, and whereas during National Salvation Army Week, we encourage our community to ask questions and get to know the Salvation Army more, and we say thank you to those who contribute to the Salvation Army's mission, whether through volunteer time, money, or in-kind donation. Now, therefore, I, Patricia Byers, Mayor of the City of Yakima, on your behalf, I'm reading this...
Thank you.
Wow.
...of the City of Yakima and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th to 18th, 2025, as National Salvation Army Week in Yakima, and we urge all residents to join us in honoring the dedicated employees, volunteers, and donors of the Salvation Army who faithfully touch so many lives in our community, dated 13th day of May, 2025.
Thank you so much.
We do have a lively group here tonight. Not rule followers, but a lively group here. Lisa, would you share some things with us, please?
Yes, yes. Thank you, City Council, for your dedication to our community. And on behalf of the Salvation Army, responsible for the Salvation Army, I too am dedicated to our community. I've been here my entire life, and so it's been a joy to be raised up and know my community and know many of the people in the community. And just like the proclamation said, we're here to serve as we can. And if we're not able to help with that service, many partnerships are able to help. And we are just so proud to be part of this community and the actions that we take. We have some really exciting news you may have heard of, and we will be moving to a new property soon in the new year, and it's just going to give us a better footprint, I guess, if you will, for the increased programming that we will be able to bring to our community. And so we're very excited about that. Can't wait. And good things are happening here in our community with the Salvation Army and so many others. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent.
Thank you.
Yes. Next on the agenda is a discussion about city-owned surplus properties, and our city attorney, Sarah Watkins, is going to address counsel.
Good evening, counsel. This is in front of you. It's something that you requested from staff to bring back with city-owned properties. So here's a real short agenda of what I'm going to talk about. We'll kind of do an overview. There's a map of all the city-owned properties. I'm not going... Yes?
So counsel, while you're speaking tonight, you may have here, I'm going to ask you to really lean into the mic. I've been told by people in the audience the last couple of weeks that cannot hear counsel when we're talking, so...
So you're saying, talk louder. Okay.
Into the mic list.
Move the mic closer to you.
I feel like I'm really loud.
Oh, you turned it off.
Thanks. See, you got me all messed up. So let's start with generally city-owned properties. We have about 300... I'm going to move this so I can look at my computer. We have about 300 parcels, most of which are being used for city purposes. So I've highlighted properties in this presentation that are city-owned and have minimal improvements or development. And then at the end, I'm going to ask for some direction. Now, this does not include parking lots that we have. It does not include the airport property or anything like that. So here is a very small map of all of the city properties. They're all in gray. As you can see, we own a number of city properties. The bigger parcels are obviously the airport, the parks, and the location of the wastewater treatment plant. So I kind of am just going to highlight properties that may be available for the city council to surplus and then sell in one way or the other, and we'll get to that later. So some of these parcels do have restrictions due to how we acquired them, as well as some might need additional site work before becoming marketable, and I'll kind of go through them one by one. And then some have restrictions about where the money can go and be allocated upon sale, so it might not all be able to go wherever the council wants it to go. So this property is on Bravo Company Boulevard. You may recognize the roundabout. The mill site is to the north of this picture. This is about a third of an acre. It is likely before this would be marketed, if the council chose, we would vacate the thin, narrow strip to the south and basically vacate that back to the adjacent property owners, and then access would be at where you see what looks like a small roundabout or where the street ends. It already has water and sewer. I put in the assessed value. That is not saying what we would sell a piece of property for, but I wanted to let you know the assessed value. Generally, the city will acquire appraisals before purchase or sale of property. We do not rely on the tax assessed value when making decisions. But I wanted to let you know approximately what that assessed value was. And those assessed values have been updated as of last week. And just stop me as we go along, if you want to talk about any of the properties. So this property is on South Fair Avenue and Chestnut. You can see the entrance to I-82 and East Yakima Avenue. It is a number of properties. It's not just one. The entire corner is made up of about six properties. Some of this would probably have to be retained for future street projects, and the access is limited to East Chestnut. So it's kind of an awkward parcel because there's only really one access, because the rest of the access routes are not allowable under DOT rules. But it is available, and all of the properties together are a little under an acre.
Is there currently plans for something in that area? I'm going to ask that question a lot tonight, so...
That's fine. That's why Bill's up there.
Yeah. You mean development plans?
Yeah, of any... I mean, like, is there a reason why we keep that there?
I know of no development plans for this property at this time.
Is this something that we would want to maybe landscape just for aesthetic value, or has it got commercial potential? Is it big enough that a business could locate there?
Like Sarah said, the biggest problem is the access has to come off of Chestnut. It won't be able to come off of Fair Avenue, and so its commercial accessibility would be limited. And if you have to put a road in to get to that larger, kind of rounded chunk, the available space just suddenly kind of shrinks.
Can we also mention the type of zoning, please?
Oh, sure. This is zoned general commercial. The previous is zoned regional development. But, you know, zoning can be changed through the comprehensive plan amendment process if necessary or through an action of the council. It depends on what the underlying future land use map zoning is for the property, whether or not it has to go through a comp plan amendment. And I didn't go through all of that process because I didn't know which ones you might be interested in pursuing. So at the end, if you have specific ones, then we will take that next step to find out all of those details about if we need to rezone it, if, you know, what exactly would need to be done to make it marketable. We'll take those next steps and do that additional research. So this property is on South 13th and East Chestnut. It is closer to the interstate than the properties you just looked at. It is a half acre. It's also zoned general commercial. This was donated to the city, and the deed requires that proceeds be used at or for Kiwanis Park. So any funding that was obtained through the sale of that property would go to a specialized fund for Kiwanis Park, upkeep or maintenance. This property is one of the triangle properties on Fair Avenue. The southern part that isn't red on the triangle is City Rideaway. It's zoned residential, R1. It does have water and sewer. It's currently green space maintained by the parks. There are some setback issues and parking issues, so we believe it would require likely an administrative adjustment to the development standards. That doesn't make it not marketable, but there would be extra steps that a developer would likely need to take to be able to use the full amount of property, because the setbacks are such that it very much limits the developable area. This property you might be familiar with. This is the one that was rezoned general commercial. It is off of Highway 24. The wastewater treatment plant is to the south. It's 2.74 acres, zoned general commercial. It's in the Greenway overlay zone, so there are some additional restrictions with regards to development. It's also subject to the development agreement that we have with the Greenway on that piece of property. There also, it's not on here, there are also some logistical issues with power lines associated with it, depending on the development.
Is there any longer-term plans with this parcel that you know of, Bill?
Nope.
We believe that this parcel is marketable. It's not part of the future wastewater treatment plant expansion, to my knowledge. And it was created in this particular shape because of the flood plain, so it fully falls outside of the plain as it sits. So that's why it's a weird shape.
Yeah.
How far is that from the Greenway properties?
Off the Greenway.
So the Greenway property, you can kind of see it all the way to the right side of the picture, like where the trees start. That is kind of like the part of the Greenway. There's the parking lot right there. I think that is the landing parking lot that you can access. Sometimes, I think it's closed right now, but in the past. So it's pretty much in that picture. And the Greenway overlay zone covers much more property than the actual Greenway itself. So that might be confusing, that the Greenway overlay encompasses more than just the Greenway. This property is directly south of the one I just showed you. It was recently created as a separate property. It's zoned general commercial.
It is.
And it's about an acre. It has the same restrictions as the previous one. This property is the park-and-ride property, kind of across the street from Target. So it doesn't... We don't know exactly how big it is. It's listed as Track A in the short plat, and we're going to need to get some more information about this one. It's zoned regional development. It was originally part of the interchange project, which is why nothing has been developed there, because it was set aside in case they needed it for the off-ramp. And it's going to require a boundary line adjustment, and there might be access issues because of restrictions regarding the off-ramp and Fair Avenue. This property is on Reservoir Road. It is zoned R1, and there's a little box on the northwest corner. There is a house that is not... is vacant. It's... The rest of the property is one of the city water reservoirs. It's the city water reservoir site. And obviously, we would need to short plat that section out. We don't want to sell the entire water reservoir site. There are some issues with this piece. We're going to have to reserve some easements. The water pipes go directly underneath where the house sits now. We believe the house needs to be demolished before this property is marketable. So we need to do a little more work on the site if that one is of interest to the council, because we'll have to do some surveying, some easement reservations, and things like that. It's currently just being used as part of the reservoir site for the water department.
It is zoned...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's zoned R1. And when you look at this in your packet afterwards, the zoning's on all of the slides, so if you need to revisit it. So we have a number of properties along the Lower Kewee Creek Trail. So here's a full map. The first mile of the trail's been constructed, as you know, as well as a parking lot, and the second mile has not yet been constructed. There are some restrictions on which parcels can and can't be sold due to grant money received from the state of Washington, referred to as RCO, Recreation and Conservation money. And use of RCO money really creates barriers to selling property, even if you're not using it. So I broke this up into sections. This section is closest to... I guess this section is on the far north side of the trail. It's a... It has an address 5505 Kewee Canyon Road. It's about four and a half acres, and it's in the county. These properties are not in the city, so I didn't put the zoning in there. And we are going to have to search the historical documents with regards to the RCO money on all of these properties. And it's currently used as a parking lot to access the trail, part of it. There's this middle piece that's another four and a half or 4.75 acres, still in the county, no public utilities, same restriction with regards to possible RCO money use. This piece is also kind of in the middle. It is over seven acres. It's a really weird shape. May have been purchased with RCO money. We're looking into that because we're not 100% sure on this one. It's more clear on some of the other ones. And there has been some interest from neighboring property owners about this property, but if RCO restricts the sale, we're not going to be able to sell it.
When you say it restricts the sale, what is... How?
I'm going to summarize it, and Bill can tell me if I'm wrong. But basically, if we take RCO money and purchase a piece of property, if we then want to transfer it, because RCO money's for parks and open spaces. If we want to transfer it to a non-park or open space use, we have to find double the amount of acreage within the city to then become a park or open space. So we can't just get rid of it. We have to exchange it for another piece. So that's what happened out at Sozo with the YMCA. So it's very difficult to do that, especially since we would have to purchase property within the city to make that exchange.
Yeah. Finding seven acres is not a real easy job.
Yeah, even if it's one for one, finding seven acres, purchasing seven acres is going to be difficult. This is at the end of the trail, and it's a number of parcels, same restrictions. And then I have a note down there that says there are, you know, linear sections of the trail that the city also owns, but I didn't add those because they don't really have any value as linear sections that are adjacent to the current trail. So they really aren't marketable at all. So that's kind of all of the possible marketable properties. So I wanted to give you kind of an outline of the process to surplus and sell the property. So the first step is to determine which properties can be sold and that you want surplus. We'll have to determine because they're city-owned. City-owned properties often need to go through a CEPA analysis before sale. Some of the properties have already been through a CEPA analysis. We need to determine the fair market value. If any of the properties were purchased for utility purposes, so for example, the water reservoir site, those have to go through a public hearing before surplus. And then the council just adopts a surplus resolution. You can outline in that resolution how you want to sell the property. You might remember when we have marketed surplus property in the past. We did one as like a closed envelope bid sale the last time for the piece of property on, you know, on the way to Kiwanis Park on the corner. And so we just took sealed bids, and the highest bid was the purchaser. So that's one option. You can do an actual auction sale. There are a number of options which we can talk about. And you really look at the properties themselves and determine what you think is the best method to get the best price, and it might be different based on what property it is. And then you schedule and proceed with the surplus sale. So it's not really difficult to surplus property. The steps that need to go into it before it gets to the council require a decent amount of staff work. But once it gets to the council, it's just a basic resolution or a resolution in a public hearing. I had this slide on affordable housing opportunities in here before. I went to the five-year plan meeting today where this actually kind of came up, but the city council previously enacted a code section that establishes the local process for disposition of surplus property for affordable housing, that local ordinance is based on the state statute, which allows you to transfer property for less than fair market value if it goes towards affordable housing. It's very strict. It has to include a covenant or requirement that the property shall be used for the designated public benefit purpose, which is affordable housing, and that is forever under the statute. And it's because this is an exemption to the constitutional provision that the city can't gift public funds. So this is an opportunity, you know, maybe for a bigger parcel, if there was, you know, an entity who wanted to put up affordable housing units that would retain ownership, it would be easier for them. Doing it for single-family houses might be a little more difficult. There'd be a covenant on the property that wouldn't allow sale unless it was within 80% of... of the AMI, I think is what it is. So, but it is an option on some parcels, if there's interest in some, to be sold for less than fair market value, or leased for less than fair market value for affordable housing purposes. So, do you have any questions? And then I would ask if you know now, if you have any that you want us to look into further and do that background research and work on, or we can come back at a separate time with council directive as well. Yes?
I mean, I personally think the ones over by the Highway 24.
Okay.
The two parcels out that way, those seem like the biggest development zone that we have that could be utilized. And then some of the other little ones, you know, like the Bravo Company, that one.
That one I like, too.
Seems like.
I'll be there with things going in.
Yeah, and then the, I think the one on Chestnut is the other one.
The round one, the runner around the corner, or the one in the back that's for park purposes?
The Page Eight. Yeah.
I don't know which one, Page Eight. Is this one?
Slide Eight, sorry.
Mine don't have numbers on it.
That one. That's the one.
Okay, good.
The square.
Yeah, the octagon thing, whatever it is, polygon. That one would be the other one I was thinking of.
Yeah, that's one I was looking at, I think. Because it has roadway going in there, so it makes development much easier. And.
Okay, so I heard.
Any other ideas, Council?
It does have some deed restrictions, but.
Yeah, it's just that the proceeds will have to go to the parks, and it'll be set aside.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Up the park.
Okay, so the Bravo Company Boulevard, the 13th Street and East Chestnut, and the two parcels out north of the wastewater treatment.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask for a quick clarification? Sarah mentioned splitting off that little sliver. Are we interested in vacating that little sliver?
I think so. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
It's kind of useless.
It'd get much easier.
Seems a little silly, too.
Any other comments, Council? Questions?
Some of those, I'd like to see us put some grass in, or maybe some landscaping, just to beautify things and let it go. Some of those smaller pieces that aren't very practical, but, and the other issue, we don't really have any parks, any more parks planned. Are we interested in the idea of looking at maybe turning some of these into parks?
I don't want to speak for Scott or the Parks Department. However, I believe that in the past, we've talked about some of our funding challenges, and providing more green space is a little bit more challenging, which is why, you know, I'm not putting irrigation into roundabouts now. I'm keeping them dry scape for just that purpose. So I think that would be a better question for Scott and Ken.
The other property I was looking at was the Reservoir Road.
Okay. Yeah, the one up with the.
That seems like a ton of land that just looks like.
For residential development?
Yeah, and, you know, it's just dirt.
When we spoke with the Water Department, that is from a previous presentation. Some of you might remember Joan Davenport's presentation, and it was really based on affordable housing options. So we looked at that as a possible set, you know, that small piece, because the Water Department, we have major pipes running through that property, so it looks like there's a lot of space, but I think there's a lot underneath the land. But if you want us to look into exactly where everything is up there and create maybe as many parcels as we can, or one big parcel, we can look at that if you want to add that to the list.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd love to see it go to affordable housing, a developer.
Or possibly, even if it's a large piece, could be affordable, but it could just be apartments as well, so.
Multi-family housing.
Yeah, multi-family housing. So I have a question about the piece on Fair and Chestnut that's kind of just around the corner there. The difficulty is there's no access. Is there opportunity to put access into that area?
Just off Chestnut.
Are you talking the one that's at the Fair Avenue ramp and 82? Yes, there is, you could come off of Chestnut, right? The problem is, there's only like 60 or 80 feet of frontage on Chestnut. So you're going to take up half of it with a road, and then that road's got to come all the way down, and then it's got to make that right-hand turn, or it stops there and provides access to that whole thing. So it just, it just makes it a little more challenging. Again, if, if we sell it, that's their problem.
Right.
Right? I don't have to do that. I just limit the access to, or only from Chestnut.
I wouldn't put it at the top of the list, but down the line, we may want to go back and look at it. Any other comments or questions by Council?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor. With that same property, I think that's why I asked the type of zoning, because it does set general construction, and, you know, what, what is maybe, I don't know if we can ask the intent of the buyer of what they want to put on, too, but I think also maybe if we do change the zoning for that one, for actual residential, to maybe kind of restrict it to that, because I do know it is really dense in that area as well, too. And I know even less than, I would say, 500 feet, there's low-income apartments as well, too, so it's very.
So yes, you can. That's what we did in the previous RFP when we sold that property with a sealed bid. That property was also zoned general commercial, but that whole area had been rezoned general commercial and was mostly residential. So we basically said that residential use had to be made for at least 10 years. And then after that, or if the neighboring properties put up commercial structures instead of the residences. So we can put some sort of limitation into the deed and, and the instructions for, for the sale.
Great.
I do have one more question. Getting down to the Lower Kewee Creek Trail properties, is there, like, people like to live next door to golf courses. They might also, if they're big fans, they might lie on the, right next to, you know, that kind of a trail or access to that. So not right away, but we get through everything else. It may be, particularly as the trail is fully developed, it may be worth looking at.
Yeah, I agree.
It may be fun to do something to expand the, the trail area, too. The other one I've been wondering about, what are we going to do to make some revenue from this building that we have right next door?
Well, that wasn't part of the presentation, so I would defer to our city manager when she returns her ideas. Or if you want to have a discussion about other city properties, there are a number of other city properties that are used for various things that might be able to be moved to other buildings, and then those buildings could be sold. But this, this was really focused on parcels that were not being used by the city at all. Otherwise, it would have been much longer.
I know that, when we had this conversation, clear back, I think in 2020, around there.
Yeah.
That the idea of even looking at the Bank of America then was that we have, we have some smaller services in the city, like ONDS and Capitol Theater offices, that could be consolidated and would not be paying all that money out for rent or leasing those properties, or to sell the ONDS building would be a possibility as well.
Yeah.
To look at doing that as we move ahead with the potential for the Bank of America building.
Question on like, I mean, some of the other city properties that we didn't mention here tonight were like, obviously like parks and different things like that. When you, I don't know this answer, that's why I'm asking it, is when you take, like, because I've had people ask me this, let's close this park down and do this. Do we then have to provide other, like, other RCO? Do you have to provide other green space options at that point?
I mean, it depends on how you obtain the funding for the park.
I see.
And I would defer to Ken Wilkinson on that. He has much knowledge about how all the parks were formed, what restrictions there are. Some of them have been formed through dedications to the city and Platts. So it just, it's based, it's a case-by-case basis, and so I think Ken probably could answer that better than I can.
Sweet. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions, Council? Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is design options for the Sixth Avenue rebuild, and our acting city engineer, Bill Preston, is going to address this.
All right, I'm going to ask Mike, Michael Olman from HLA and Aaron Luoma from HBB to come up here and join me for this presentation. So first and foremost, I kind of want to address the large crowd we have for tonight's presentation. I'm not used to getting so much attention. But the very first thing that I want to, I want to point out is, this is not a presentation on the trolleys, okay? This is a presentation on the Transportation Benefit District Project Sixth Avenue and its rebuild that was identified when the Transportation Benefit District was formed, and the list was created, and then this project was added to it. So while the trolley is obviously a very important part of the, the project, this is not a presentation on the trolley. Okay? All right. So we're going to kind of split this up, we're going to go back and forth throughout it, but first thing I want to do is I want to talk about, oh, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Just real quick, because this is kind of long, and I expect it to take a little bit of time, because I haven't done this before, so I wanted to go through a quick agenda of what we're going to try and accomplish. So I want to talk about why exactly we're here. Why is this project different than some of the other ones? And, and I'm before you now. I want to talk about specifically your role as Council in the, as this project moves forward. We heard a little bit earlier today about the options that were presented, and why did we pick those options? And then the public outreach effort, which is probably 50% of this presentation, and then the next steps that I'm going to be asking Council to make and to direct staff to do. Because of its length, or anticipated length, I am encouraging you to ask your questions throughout. Just make this engaging. I think we'll get, all of us will get a little bit more out of it and make it a working session. Okay, so with that, I want to talk real quick about the project limits. So the project limits, as identified on the TBD list, were from Walnut Street to River Road. Sixth Avenue obviously goes north and south of that, but the specific project limits associated with this project are those. And within that sec, segment of road, well, there are three different kind of core areas. There's a, there's a commercial, there's a residential, and there's an industrial. So we actually hit all three of those major zonings, I guess, in this project, which adds to its complexity. Okay, so, real quick, on the backstory, first and foremost, this project is here because it's a rehabilitation project, right? If you drive down Sixth Avenue, you could argue that it is the worst road in the city. You may not win that argument, but it's, it's, it's up there. It's in the discussion, okay? Which means there's a lot that goes into it. This is not just a simple fill-in-fill like I've done on some of you or Nob Hill for the last few years. This is a total rebuild like North First Street. This is a big, a big project. It will be done according to the complete streets and other engineering standards, whether they be in our code or in the just regular design standards. Actually, that was mentioned earlier tonight, was a reference to complete streets. That is, those elements will be incorporated as part of this. In later slides, you're going to hear a little bit about the additional elements that make this route unique. Two specifically are the William O Douglas Trail, which travels along this, and then, of course, there's the Yakima Valley Trolley, which runs right down the center of it. This, I'm before you today because of the heightened interest in this project. This affects the Yakima Valley Trolley, or actually, the city's trolley. They operate it for us. And so there's a lot of interest there. There's also been a lot of interest from the William O Douglas folks, as well as the BikePed folks, and then, as you'll find out later, from all of those up and down the corridor. So there's a lot of public interest in this. And because this is funded with TBD, I need to give you an update on that. There are code requirements that require me to be up here before you presenting this. And following this presentation, there's an, I get to stay, and we will talk a little bit more about the actual TBD list and where it stands. And this, it kind of ties this all together. It's a perfect segue into that discussion. Okay, so, moving on. So specifically, I wanted to talk about your role as Council. So we are going to share the public feedback that we got on this project. I think it helps inform Council of community feedback, and helps you to make the decision on how you want to direct me to move forward. So this isn't quite the same thing, but it's provide direction on the elements. So when we talk a little bit later about the different pieces and parts that go in there, there may be some that you want me to put in or take out, and to what level those may be in or out. And so we will talk about those soon, upcoming. Provide the funding. So depending upon how we move forward, you know, we have TBD funding, and I will share that with you during the course of this. However, if there's not funding, then I will be looking at you saying, where's that funding going to come from? And then.
From trees.
From trees? Money, it's cloth. But one of the things that you're not being asked to do is to provide the specific elements of the design. That is the engineering responsibility. HLA will be providing that engineering design with, you know, the city's engineering department oversight. So we won't get into, and I don't want to get into, the specific design elements, or design criteria, I should say, but however, the elements will be discussed. And then unfortunately, we had to move the decision from June 3rd to June 17th, just to make some of our timeline requirements for TBD, public notice and hearings and things like that. Okay, so, before I hand it over to Michael, I want to talk real quick about the project outline and the direction that I asked them to proceed. So back in 2017, we talked about, this got added to the list, right? I wasn't here, I don't know who up here was either. So, but it got added to the list. And the title of this is Rail, Sixth Avenue Rebuild and Rail Renovation Project. That was the title at that time. So we've kept that. We were finally able to move forward on this last year. So we put out an RFQ, did it, and HLA got the project. One of the primary things that I wanted to talk about, or I wanted HLA to do, was this public outreach effort. This, I believe, was a very important part of this project. It's not one that I have brought before you ever before, in the four years that I've been here, because those projects, even North First, didn't have the same level of interest that Sixth Avenue does because of its unique elements. And so in addition to that, there may be some upcoming public outreach requirements, depending upon the funding source. If I'm able to, I think Matt, you've mentioned, work my magic, right? If I'm able to do that whole thing, there may be a requirement for public outreach, and this will meet those, that requirement, and so I won't have to do it again, type of thing. So where does that put us? That puts us here. We have spent the last six months, six months, I think, doing an extensive public outreach effort, and that is what I want to share with you today. And so I've asked HLA and HBB to help me do that. So with that, I think I can, oh, no, huh, I'm not done. I still have more mine. Couple more for me. So I'm not going to sit here and say I'm a trolley expert. That's not my job. But the trolley is a key element of this project, as evidenced by what you heard tonight. So a quick reminder, the city owns the Yakima Valley Trolley, and the Yakima Valley Trolley operates it, which kind of seems weird, but, and so we're currently in the process of renewing that agreement right now. That would, that current agreement expires on June 30th. So there was some talk about the bridge to Seela, the bridge that we closed back in '23. We do have the funding for that. HLA actually has that contract, and so we will start that design as soon as I can get it before Council. And then, so right now, I think you're aware that the cat, I have trouble saying this word, catenary lines, the electric catenary lines are currently out of commission, so the trolley is run utilizing a diesel generator. We've talked a little bit about the. We've talked a little bit about the poor track condition. No, we haven't. We will talk a little bit more about the poor track condition, and you'll see a couple of photos, but just a quick reminder, that is why the crossing at River Road had to come out, as I believe Ken mentioned earlier. And then, if you remember, I think it was in '23, the rail popped at Fruitvale, and so we had to make those repairs then. So the track is in poor condition in, in many locations. Now, we also heard about the importance of the trolley to rail and city history, and so we don't want to downplay that. It is very important and it is integral, you know, to keep it if we wanted to receive the historic landmark designation. Okay. The other one I want to touch on is the William O Douglas Trail. It travels, you know, throughout the city as well, well, two and a half miles through the city, and it goes from Yakima to Mount Rainier National Park. There's been a lot of interest in that. And then north of the project, there is already a part of the trail that has been constructed, north of Fruitvale, excuse me. And that ends at Hathaway and I Street, and you'll see a photo of that a little bit later. And then you can see the little house on the map where that's the birthplace. So currently, the trail ends at the Trolley Barn. So, okay. All right. And then some other considerations, these aren't necessarily unique to this project, but they are considerations that must be addressed during the design of this. So the first is, we do have some water and sewer and other utilities that are along the route. We are going to have to address them. Some are city-owned, some are not. There's the multimodal options. This goes back to the complete streets discussion. BikePed, including transit, all operate along that route. Specifically, the Transit Center is going to be at the end of Sixth Street on the corner of Fruitvale. There are some franchises, you know, there's a lot of power pulls and a lot of utilities that are along that route that will have to be worked through and around. Parking, we will address those from a design standpoint, you, there's some conversation about that a little bit later. The intersections, we heard about, and then, of course, we have Garfield Elementary, they're right along Sixth Street as well. So, the, that, okay, there we go. That's the end of me. So I'm going to hand it over to Michael to talk about the existing and designed pieces of it.
Counsel, thank you very much for having us here tonight. Really appreciate your time. Bill kind of highlighted this, but Sixth Ave is a really important north-south corridor within the community for a lot of different reasons. From an engineering standpoint, I actually use the road quite a bit, and it's obviously in terrible condition, and so it's something that I'm excited to get fixed. One of the things within the first area that we're going to talk about is the industrial segment. It goes from River Road to Fruitvale. Currently, the width of right-of-way there is about 60 feet. What we have currently is not sufficient for all the uses of, of that corridor. When I say that, what I mean is that if you have cars parked on either side of it, trucks coming down it, and a trolley, everything doesn't fit. Oftentimes, what you end up getting is cars parking, you know, in, on sidewalks or things like that because of the space constraints. So that's something that's important to several of these areas, but specifically the industrial. There's obviously a lot of history along this with the trolley, the William O Douglas Trail. It supports a ton of business. Obviously, the big, you know, some of the big ag companies that are down there, they use Sixth Ave extensively. There's a lot of industrial work there as well. And so as we've done this project, we try and keep that in mind as well, of who are users and what are they using it for. It's also one of the few greenway access points that doesn't involve an arterial. And so as we got onto this project, I didn't realize that previously, but a lot of people prefer not to ride their bike down 40th or 16th. So if you have access via a road that's not quite as busy, it's very heavily used. I want to walk you through the conditions of several of these areas. I'm not sure if council's had the chance to drive this recently. In this first picture, I am standing near Madison, looking to the north, basically near the train tracks where that crossing is. One of the things you'll notice in this picture, there's no storm facilities, and there's really not any pedestrian facilities. It's just pavement. We like to separate vehicles from pedestrians, you know, usually with, with curb. This corridor actually has some other interesting barriers for that, but that's something that's really important to this project. As we see, there's a lot of pedestrian use here to make sure that we actually create separation. And also just the pavement, you'll see that throughout this presentation, as well beyond its useful life, and so we see pavement failure and a lot of signs about that sort of thing. The next picture I have here is of the railroad crossing. You've heard about this a couple of different times tonight, the Track Diamond, as it's called. And so when you have two rails that cross each other, there's a really elaborate set of rail, like crossings that are created there. That's referred to as a Track Diamond, and that was removed in 2024 by the railroad because it was failing. That to replace, as you heard already tonight, is several hundred thousand dollars. And so that's something that the city did evaluate, just was not in the budget to replace that at a time, also knowing that this project was coming. One other thing to highlight on this particular one, there's no crossing safety here. So that'll, this is not a main line, but it is still used quite a bit as a spur line. And so vehicles have real no, no separation. Essentially, there's some yield signs and don't get hit by the train. So the goal here would be to upgrade that and actually have like some crossing arms and what you're probably more accustomed to at railroad crossings. This picture is looking down the William O Douglas Trail. That was constructed with RCO funding. You've heard about that tonight in some of the, it's a great program. There's just some strings attached to it. So in this particular area, utilizing that past funding from RCO, one of the strings that comes with it is that it has to be maintained at that width or greater per RCO agreement. I don't know the terms if the city wanted to do something different, presumably pay back the, the amount or something along those lines. But this area of the William O Douglas Trail is heavily used, especially by students headed to Stanton. So as part of this, you know, as we've been working on this project, I take Sixth Ave every chance that I get, coming down to meetings or things like that, and you, there are more kids that use that to head to school than I ever would have guessed. So it's heavily used, and I think it's a really important aspect to, to this project. It is just from Hathaway to the north up to River Road, where the wider segment was constructed with RCO funding. The next section that I want to talk about is the residential section. This goes from Fruitvale to West D Street. Similar to what I just told you in the industrial area, there's not enough space for everything. If you have the chance to drive it, you'll see it. People are parked up on sidewalks, things like that to create space for it. So there's only 60 feet of right-of-way, and as you start adding sidewalks, buffer areas for utilities, things like that, your roadway, room for the trolley, there just simply isn't enough with the space that the city currently has for that. The residential area, quite honestly, is one of the more difficult areas to evaluate because there's a ton of competing interests in there. We've got parking for people, very few houses along there have driveways or garages, things like that, and so the street parking is really important. We've heard that throughout kind of our, our public outreach process from people who are actually there. Obviously, it's used for driving. We've also got a school in the area with a heavy residential. If you go through that area on a school morning, you'll see a lot of kids walk into school as well. And so just with all these competing factors, there's a lot to evaluate through here. This picture that you see is standing near Garfield, so the school along the corridor. What I see in this when I look at it is a ton of pavement distress, and that's nerd for failing pavement. So what you'll see in a lot of these areas is kind of a scaling pattern, referred to as alligator cracking a lot of time, kind of looks like alligator scales. Typically, what that means is that you've got base failure happening, and so it's not something that you can just come put a layer of asphalt over or something like that. You got to dig all the way down, fix the problem at the bottom, and fully reconstruct that.
Fun. Said fun.
Okay, gotcha. The next picture, similar area near Fairbanks there, just looking, looking along the tracks. You see the same thing, kind of that scaling pattern of failing asphalt. As we looked at this, and we do, we've already done survey on it and kind of done some real, real preliminary evaluation of it, there's not much drainage, so you get water that sits there. And long-term, that's a big issue that leads to pavement failure, especially with having tracks in that, that creates kind of a unique opportunity for water to get down below the pavement, and then, you know, as it gets cold, freeze thaw, things like that, cause that failure to happen. You know, so that water damage is an issue, and just as I've talked to public works staff, this area is, is truly just a, kind of a nightmare to maintain. It's a perpetual maintenance, maintenance issue for the city. So I think it's important to note. Moving along, we've got the commercial section. And so the commercial section, we have a ton of space. That's West D Street to Walnut, which is right by Davis there. There's 100 feet of right-of-way, and so an extra 40 feet compared with the previous two sections to work with. So within that, you know, you can see a typical section on the screen in front of you, and with that, you've got really wide lanes, you've got room for parking, you've got wide sidewalks, things like that. And so space is not the constraint in here. It's really the other two, other two segments. Similar to the previous slides, just you hear, is just a lot of consistent pavement failure. So I won't, I won't beat that too much, but it is just a perpetual maintenance issue, whether it's crack ceiling or things like that, but it gets to a point where there's really not a effective way for public works to, you know, prevent anything further, failure is happening. And lastly, along this, here's just a, some couple pictures of the William O Douglas signs that are highlighted along this route. So there, whether or not you've been able to walk it before, that infrastructure and those signage are along this route, kind of telling the history of, of what's going on there. Is important to note that as you move past Hathaway, it's not actually, it doesn't meet the designation for a trail anymore for width, it really turns into sidewalk, but that is still there, you know, as a designated route for people to, to utilize. I think I get to-
Yep.
Pass back to Bill.
Okay. So, real quick, before I go to this next slide, I just wanted to mention that during the course of this whole thing, I did direct HLA that no right-of-way, right? I do not want any additional right-of-way on this project. If we do additional right-of-way, any number you see tonight is toast. It won't even be close to what we would actually need to spend. Right-of-way along here is going to be very expensive, so the direction is fit it within what we have. So that'll be, now, you could tell me otherwise, and I will let you do that, but I will not be able to give you a price today on what that would look like. Okay.
On the Douglas building, is the house restored? Is that, is that actually being used? What part of the William O Douglas Trail is up and running? I, I've seen that house there, but is it on display? Do people come look at it? And, and as far as the trail itself going all the way up to Mount Rainier, what, what has, is it functionally complete except for this part, or what's going on with that?
You need to ask the William O Douglas Trail folks.
I thought you do everything.
Not that, or most things.
All right.
Yep, sorry. Okay. So before I go on, are there any questions? You guys have been uncharacteristically quiet, so I was, I'm getting nervous. You're saving it up.
Proceed.
Proceed? Okay, perfect. Good.
With what you've got, are you planning on putting sidewalks on both sides of the street, or just putting in streets and curbs and gutter, or what?
So, real quick, can I ask you to get closer to the mic so I can hear?
Are there going to be sidewalks on both sides of the street, or what's the plan on that?
That will depend upon what you ultimately tell me, the design constraints on what elements we'll be including, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. That, that will be determined then. It may make sense that we do, may, there's a lot of different options, and we can kind of talk a little bit more. If I don't answer your question a little bit later, ask it again, because I want to make sure that I do address it, but I don't. It's, it depends, right? There you go. That's my attorney term. It depends. Okay. So the need for the community engagement, the, the three distinct areas that are along this corridor presented some conflicting needs and wants along it, right? You know, each group or each area has different needs and wants along it. And so how do, I can make an educated guess, and I could probably get pretty close, but I might miss some things that are important to those, the, those regular users of that corridor, and so we want to hear what those are so that we don't miss those as I give direction to HLA. That variety of stakeholders, right? There's a big old long list there, and there's, there's obviously a lot more than just that. But we wanted to do our best to reach out and talk to as many of those as we possibly could, and so that was part of this public outreach effort. I figured giving you the most, as council, the most information that I could, unbiased, unfiltered, just raw data, here you go, lets you make an informed decision on how to proceed on this project. This is funded currently with just TBD funds, and so those are our local funds.
You give us a lot of data with 53 slides.
Yes. I, yes.
I thought it was 54.
Well, it's now says 53.
Yeah, I think it's 53. Don't remind me. I tried to get these guys to shorten it, but. And then if there's any funding or, or policy requirements, then this effort will satisfy that. I also learned a lot from North First Street, right? There was, you know, quite a bit of disruption. It's a, it's a, obviously a different makeup along the route, but I try not to make the same mistake twice, and so I want to make sure that I, I am transparent in what I do during construction and what, and why, right? Both to council and to the public who are going to be impacted by the construction of the project. And then a quick reminder is that I, the, the industrial section is also part of the truck route. So that's another characteristic along it. But ultimately, what I want to do is I want to present, this whole public outreach piece is transparency through communication, right? I want to communicate with you folks about what's going on, and then I want the community to communicate with us about what they want and need. Not going to be able to do everything that everybody wants, but at least I think this will show that we heard what the public is saying. Okay. So before, I'm going to hand it off to Aaron next, but essentially, I asked them to kick off the public outreach phase, and he'll go over how we went about that.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Bill. We began this public engagement process with a kickoff meeting and a, and a site walk of that entire corridor, and a lot of those photos you saw this evening were from that walk last summer. And then we had an open house and an online survey, and I'll go into the details of, of the results of that and how that went. So end of July last year, we had this walk and talk where we invited a bunch of key stakeholders, William O Douglas Trail, Yakima Valley Trolleys, School District, the Downtown Association, and we just walked the corridor with them, and we got to ask them questions, they got to ask us questions, they pointed things out to us as we walked a good portion of that corridor. It was a pretty warm day, but learned a lot just walking the street. And then we met, came back to HLA's office, and we had just a bunch of questions pre-set up to ask how they used the corridor, what types of transportation uses did they use, what were their perceptions of the street, its condition, what was, what was their vision for what Sixth Avenue could be? And we had a great conversation just to learn and to listen and to write down a lot of their comments, and that really helped frame the next sort of phase of engagement and what we ended up doing later. And that was really to go back then to the drawing table with the engineers and to develop a list of constraints and opportunities, knowing, like Bill said- and to develop a list of constraints and opportunities, knowing like Bill said, we can't fit everything in, but let's understand what are our parameters? Uh, what are our things that we can't change? What are the things that are flexible? And certainly, uh, to be able to respond to the variety of the context of the neighborhood, whether that's the industrial, residential, or commercial, and knowing that some of those uses and demands may differ along the corridor. And incorporate that feedback that we heard from those significant stakeholders from our walk and talk visit. Uh, and then really to develop three different ideas out of these constraints, uh, as just to show a range of possibilities, not to say that these are the exact designs, but just to show the broad range of what's feasible, uh, so that the public could later on see, you know, again, that same range. And to attach, uh, high-level costs to those so that the public understood. All the graphics that, uh, you've seen so far in the presentation and most of what you'll see later on, the public, those were the same graphics that the public saw throughout the engagement process. So the first concept we developed, uh, included the trolley and it, and the, the goal here was to try to put in as much as we could, all, all the things, all of the design elements. Uh, and you can see the, uh, the, the dimensions there. I'm not going to go into detail for each area, uh, but includes the trolley down the middle, uh, and then includes sidewalks and the William O Douglas Trail there to the left, and drive lanes and parking where there was room. Uh, but you can be, probably begin to sense kind of what fits into the puzzle with these elements based on our constraints. Notably, the, the right-of-way widths of sixty feet for the two sections and then a hundred feet at the commercial. Uh, note that the twelve-point-eight million dollars does not include the two-point-one million for the catenary line costs. That was the same information that was presented to the public as we developed these concepts. And then I'm going to transfer this over to Michael to talk about the next concept.
Yeah, the second concept that we came up with, um, after sitting down and really kind of evaluating different options, was, um, having the trolley and then a couplet. Um, so if you guys are not familiar with a couplet in, um, engineering terms, you are outside because you've driven on Lincoln and MLK. So you've got one, basically, one, uh, single-direction roads opposing each other to help circulate traffic. They're really effective from an engineering standpoint. So, um, it's something that we've, we've looked at, and that would be in combination with Fifth and Sixth. That would not be the entire length of it, because, um, Fifth doesn't even go the entire length of, of Sixth, but, um, it would be primarily through the residential area, um, essentially Fruitvale, um, to Lincoln. For the next one, Aaron. So that would, what's important about that is it would potentially allow the reclassification of Sixth into an arterial. And with that is the ability to chase a lot of, uh, federal funds. So as you can imagine, there's, um, a million residential roads in the United States, and so that's not what the federal government has decided that they want to put their dollars to trying to be efficient with it. And so they focus those towards arterials. So, um, that's kind of the idea behind it. And while you would certainly put more traffic onto Sixth than what there is currently, there's a lot of, um, ability for funding to help mitigate that as well with safety improvements and things like that. And then what it also does is you've got one less lane of traffic. And so, you know, eleven, twelve feet that you can then spread out into other, um, aspects of the project, whether that be bike lanes, you know, in a single direction, or sidewalks, whatever it may be. With Fifth, Fifth has about eighty feet of right-of-way along the entire corridor. And so, um, knowing that we've actually got space to work with there, um, what this does is it does come with a, a slightly higher cost, and that's associated with, um, going on to Fifth and all the signal changes and some things like that that'd be required there to make this work functionally.
Does that include the cantar, catenary lines?
That does not. So, these numbers that you see, the catenary lines would add about two-point-one million dollars if you were to, to upgrade those.
What do you do with, uh, just north of Lincoln Avenue where Sixth Avenue is split in two?
I don't know that I follow that.
Yeah, me neither.
Sixth Avenue comes straight down, but then there's another little section that goes off to the right.
Oh, okay, so through that area, um, where the, the triangle is?
Yeah.
So with that, I mean, it, you'd, we'd follow the, the, just the, the sixth corridor with that. And so, what that delineation looks like, I'm not, I'm not positive. There may have to be, you know, something with that island there. You may have to, um, add some, um, a way to like turn through that area so that people wouldn't get confused. But that's certainly something we could solve during the design of it.
Okay, and then the third concept that we presented to the public and we developed, um, was a concept with no trolley. And a part of the goal here with the engagement with the public is, is to present a broad range of options. Not to say that any of one of these was the, the design, but just to show the range of possibilities and to show the range of costs and what can fit and can't fit in this corridor depending on what we include. And so here you can see the space allocation of certain elements when you don't have the trolley, uh, and what can fit in and what can't fit in still, um, with a, a cost of seven and a half million dollars. So we took these three concepts and those costs, uh, as you saw them, uh, just as you saw them. And we had an open house at Garfield Elementary, middle of September, and it was a great turnout. We had lots of people, uh, we promoted, uh, the event through Door Hangers, uh, social media, city website. Uh, there was a news segment, and we had a great turnout. Lots of people showed up, we had good conversations. Uh, it, it was a great evening to be able to listen to the community, uh, regarding this corridor. At the same time, we also released an online survey, recognizing that not everybody, you know, can make it out to a, a elementary school on a weekday night type of thing. And the online survey had all the same information in terms of graphics and images and asked the same questions we were asking in person. Uh, that was promoted through several different venues, uh, and outlets as well. Uh, and we collected seven-hundred-and-six responses, great feedback. Uh, of that seven-hundred, about six-hundred-and-seventy told us where they lived, which was important for us to understand where the feedback was coming from, who, who are these people that we were listening to, that we wanted to, to get their feedback from. Uh, and about, uh, forty-eight percent of those responses were from Yakima, to give you a, a sense and a gauge of, of where these people were coming from and their, their voice. And notably, nineteen of them were, are only from residents along Nineteenth. So the results of the online survey, uh, and the feedback from the open house, uh, you can see here basically in how it's distributed on, on who, uh, lives in Yakima, uh, but, or who lives in Yakima but not on Sixth, uh, and who lives elsewhere. So you can see sort of this swing, uh, that there's a, a, a large portion of responses that were outside of Yakima, which we did hear earlier in the public comment of a lot of, of, of support for the trolley, in particular from outside of the region. Uh, notably here, you can even see how we, uh, got a bunch of out-of-state voices and, and even a, a handful from out of the country. So that was, uh, exciting to see. Here's just a, a small little map to, to see the distribution of some of those survey responses. This does not show the quantity of responses, it just shows where, where, uh, people were, uh, saying they were coming from uh, when they filled out the online survey. And then also up and down the, the Yakima Valley and the eastern Washington region, uh, a lot of voices and a lot of input on this online survey, uh, the first one. So with all that collected feedback from the online survey, this was the results. And it doesn't change too much when you filter for, uh, in-city of Yakima residents or outside and including everybody. Uh, but a vast majority support the concept with the trolley, seventy-nine percent. Uh, fourteen percent concept with the trolley, with the couplet, uh, concept no trolley at, at eight percent. Uh, and that, those percentages don't change when you filter, uh, too much. And now I'll hand it over to Bill to talk about some lessons we learned as a team.
All right, so, um, the, it, the survey and the open house were actually pretty enlightening, right? There was this, this, uh, tremendous support for the trolleys. So when we started looking at the actual data from, um, all of the information that we had, both, uh, from both sources, um, we realized there were a couple of things that were missing here. One was there was low participation from the Spanish-speaking community, right? We didn't, I mean, we had translators available, uh, for the open house, but, uh, uh, we didn't have many, um, show up. Uh, we also had a very low participation from, um, the local area, uh, residents and the employees that came. So, I didn't feel, when I looked at that, that we had a very accurate representation of the, one, the locals that are going to be affected by the changes to Sixth Avenue, or the city as a whole, right? Um, and, uh, it, it was very trolley-centered, centric, right? Um, and we know, as I described earlier, there are a lot of different and other elements that are just as important along this route that need to be addressed. So, and then also that, uh, the costs were very simplistic. Um, and so maybe we could get, uh, kind of dig into those just a little bit deeper in, in what we could possibly present to the public. So, um, I made an executive decision and said, we're going to, um, continue our public outreach efforts as I didn't feel this was adequate. Uh, and so I asked HLA to, um, and HBB to do some additional efforts. So, um, one of the things that, um, that kind of, kind of stuck out was, uh, you know what? I'm going to save that for a little bit later. So, okay. So what we ended up doing was moving into phase two of this public outreach effort. And this is kind of a brief outline real quick. And then, uh, Aaron is going to go through each of these other efforts, and this really is primarily around trying to reach those locals that, um, we weren't not able to reach with our first effort. So, Aaron, I'm going to let you go ahead.
Before that, though. We're going to talk a little bit about costs, and, and Bill mentioned going a little bit deeper dive. And this, this same information was what was shown at the, the public, uh, in phase two as well.
Yeah, so I'll speak to the cost and then, uh, Bill gets to talk to the funding since he's the magician at finding dollars. So, um, one of the first things to highlight here and just remind council of is these are costs for the limits of this project for the trolley. And so this isn't restoring it out to Seela or even back to the barn. This is from River Road to Walnut. So those project costs, you've seen those on the three separate slides that we have, and those vary between seven and a half million and thirteen, uh, point-two million dollars. Some notable things that, um, are included in that above, um, as you see there, like the roadway and pedestrian improvements. And so, we have to make some assumptions on what that will include. Um, again, as Bill alluded to, we can take a decent guess at, you know, what this would look like. For seven and a half million dollars, you know, if there's not a trolley, um, that speeds certain things up. And so, we quantify that and put that into, um, in basically an estimated cost breakout. The trolley tracks on that are about five-point-three million dollars. And so, it's really significant. That doesn't include the catenary lines, um, and the poles associated with that, which would be about another two-point-one million dollars. So to generate those costs, as I am not, um, one of the leading experts on trolleys, I hired one of the nation's leading experts on trolleys with Stone Consulting, um, who is, uh, out of Pennsylvania. Um, and they truly are like one of the nation's leading experts on trolleys and rails. And so, we brought them in to help understand those costs, so that's, um, so those are not things that are, um, lightly generated. Those are very legitimate, uh, expert-generated costs on it. As Bill noted, uh, there's not right-of-way acquisition on this, so, um, if that is something that council ultimately wanted to do, then, um, the schedule and the costs that you are seeing here, um, are certainly out the door and are likely to inflate quite a bit.
Talking like two-X, three-X, four-X, what this is?
Yes.
All of it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, right.
We, you, it's, it's too unknown.
Yeah, if you have people that decide that they don't want to do that and you have to go to eminent domain, um, Sarah gets to be a part of that process, um, things like that. And so, you know, every time you're in somebody's yard, you're replacing their fence, um, their sidewalk, their irrigation, their, you know, you can ju, you can see how that, um, quickly gets into a really big number. Plus, you're buying their property for fair market value. So.
Commercial, commercial and industrial property is not cheap.
Yeah.
No property's not cheap, but.
Yeah.
But with that, um, we have some, also have some common costs to this project, um, that we didn't present in, in these because they come out of enterprise funds. And so water is going to be redone, for example, is, is a portion of this. And so, we're under contract to do that design with the city, um, but that's not coming out of TBD dollars. And so, those costs are sewer, um, irrigation, some things like that are, are costs that are, um, part of the, will be part of the project, but they're not included in what you're seeing, because we're really trying to focus on TBD dollars associated with this. You know, we've got some other assumptions in here, um, you know, that, like, utility poles and things like that. We're not going to underground the power and things like that, because, um, that's certainly things we could do. There's agreements that you have with Pacific Power, but as soon as those, um, those options, uh, again, if want to underground power for this corridor, there's a ton of costs associated with that. So we're making some, and that's not typical to what, what Yakima would do on this type of project. So, keeping that consistent. Bill, want to speak to funding?
Yep, okay. So, um, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this because we're going to talk a little bit more about it after this. Um, but, so as you know, that this project, as I mentioned earlier, is all re, is funded one-hundred percent right now by, um, the TBD funds that we generate from our twenty-dollar annual fee for license plates. Currently, we're getting, last year we got about one-point-six, I think the year before we got about one-point-seven. So it's kind of hovering in that range. Um, I did need to spend some on North First. It, uh, well, I, I tried. It's, it's, I tried, I got, but I had to spend some. And so what we started off twenty-twenty-five with was about four-point-eight million in, uh, in the bank, right? Ready for, to move forward on this project, which is, which is what allowed me to move forward on this project. And so, as you can see, there's a shortfall, even from the cheapest option of seven-point, whatever it was. Um, we're still short, right? So I need a couple of years to continue to have that revenue come in so that I can fund it. If, um, uh, if we move with another option, then we're going to have to find some additional revenue somewhere. And as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, council's role is to help me with that. Actually, I think I said your role is to do it, not help me. So. So, um.
I got a twenty-dollar bill.
You will get three inches. Maybe.
Even that.
Maybe, maybe.
One inch.
Okay, yeah, the rest of the TBD dis, funding discussion I think we will have, um, uh, later.
Thank you, Bill. Um, so that, that detailed costs, that was the, what we presented to the public at the second phase in all these different separate outreach events, uh, in that more detailed granular way. And the other thing that we did is rather than present just three concepts, we wanted to consider more of, you know, not focusing so much on the exact design of what it could look like, but what were the elements? And understanding of these eight elements, what were the priorities of the community? Um, how would they rank these in, in importance? And then letting us determine later on, with your direction, what would the, the design be? We still presented the three concepts as options and, and ways of combining those puzzle pieces, but we wanted to focus a little bit more on just the individual elements themselves. And that's how we arranged, uh, our surveys and our graphics. And we presented this, uh, just in alphabetical order, uh, like this. The first event that we had, uh, was focused just on the industrial group. So these are the large businesses, the warehouses, Washington Fruit here on the north end of the corridor. And we invited them out for a lunch. Uh, we, uh, invited a bunch and we, we had several that attended. Uh, but even though there was, uh, maybe fewer who attended, uh, the business size that they represented were, were some of the really big, big ones there on the north end. And so, out of that outreach effort, when we asked them to. And so out of that outreach effort, when we asked them to help prioritize those design elements and rank them, that we got 103 surveys out of that, so quite a bit for just one lunch. And actual two letters from businesses voicing their opinions and their needs for the corridor, specifically thinking about truck routes, you know, pavement conditions, when they're running lots and lots of trucks during harvest time, those sorts of things. So that was really valuable to hear. The next event we had was focused on the south end, so we had it at another local establishment right there on the corridor, just like the industrial event, and had lunch, invited a bunch of businesses out. Of course, you know, their needs and concerns were different than the industrial group. They're thinking a lot about parking, and their patrons, and Friday night, and traffic, and those sorts of things, construction impact potentially. So there, but it was still really valuable to hear their feedback on these design elements, and we got 32 surveys from that, one lunch and one letter. And then we were trying to figure out how we can reach the residential group, in particular the kids and the families behind the kids that go to Garfield Elementary. And inspired by my own interactions with my kids and getting that bundle of paper on a Friday afternoon in their backpacks, and you're shuffling through it all, we stuffed surveys and gave surveys out to every single kid in the whole school to take home with them. And we said, hey, if you return this survey filled out by your parents or guardian or whoever's at home and return it, that the top classes win a pizza party. And they were so, so excited and thrilled because normally homework is never that fun, of course. And so they, we got a lot of feedback, 289 returned surveys. And that wasn't surveys filled out by the kids. These were from their parents, from their guardians, English and Spanish, a lot of diversity, and the, one particular class responded back and saying that they never, they never win anything in their class or school competitions, but they won this one. And so they were super proud of that.
How many surveys were the two winning classes?
I don't remember offhand.
Catherine?
We did not look at class breakdown, we just put it all together, so...
Yeah, when we combined the data, but you're asking like, what pushed them over? I mean, I think the average class size is like 25 to 30 or something, so if they, if they got nearly everybody, then they'd probably be the winner.
Nice.
Yeah.
Pizza party.
And then, but we wanted to recognize that, you know, not everyone has kids, you know, at that school, of course, who uses this corridor. And so we wanted to reach out to the residential group as well and just be present. Part of this second phase of outreach was really focusing on going to people and offering something to them rather than having them come to us, because we wanted to thank them for the feedback, thank them for their time. And so we went out on Saturday morning in three different locations along the corridor, just in the residential area, with blue tents and lots of coffee and lots of donuts, and we hung 200 of these door hangers around the corridor in English and Spanish. And then we had very simple surveys in English and Spanish, as well as more lengthy ones, but we're asking the same questions. And the very simple one was kind of out of the corridor where you could just rank those eight elements, one through eight, draw a line between the number and the picture. So really simple and easy, and we got a lot of surveys just doing that very quickly, 54 of them through that outreach event, and just a lot of good conversations, too. So not just quantitative data, but really got to know neighbors, lots of ages, lots of different kids, as you can see here in these pictures as well. And towards the end of the second phase of outreach, we wanted to recognize where people were at already, again, going to them, and a part of that is everyone needs food, needs groceries, and so we went to a couple of Rays in the area. And one in particular, at Summit View, I think Michael's, this was his ingenious idea, is this is, this was the location, but also the time where people were paying their car tab fees? And so everybody walking into the store had their car tab sort of in their hands, ready to pay, and we were able to ask them, hey, do you want to know where that money goes? Here's a project, would you like some, you know, could you give us some feedback on this? And so we had a lot of great interactions, English and Spanish, again, 58 surveys received. And then at this time, we also started to promote a larger online survey that had all the same graphics, all the same information and questions to the city at large, and started to promote that. So I want to walk you through a little bit about the results of all of this outreach. And again, as others have mentioned, certainly stop me or any of us any time with questions, but this was the results in that simple ranking question of one through eight. As you can see here, this was 551 in-person, hard copy survey results. And you can see the most important thing here on the left was the sidewalk, shortly followed by the parking. And so we, that was, I think we could agree with that based on our in-person qualitative conversations as well. And then with this online survey number two, that was promoted by the city and Yakima Valley Trolleys. It was great, it was open for a whole month, just like the first survey was open for a whole month, and again, asked all those same questions. And out of just this online survey, we got 267 responses collected, and you can see the breakdown of those who told us where they lived. Again, that was an optional question in order to just gain the most response as possible, but we did want to understand where the voices were coming from. And that 44% of those were not in Yakima, but 56% were, and you can see the further breakdown there of those numbers. So if you combine online and in-person survey responses, because they were asking the same questions, and you might be asking at this point, well, why not combine Phase One and Phase Two? We asked different questions, and so we can't really quite combine, you know, an apple and orange. So for right here is we're looking at 818 surveys, 551 in-person, 267 online, and you can see how the breakdown, sidewalk's still the most important, travel lanes and parking are neck and neck here at second and third. And I'm gonna basically tell you what the difference was here between if you just looked at in-person versus online, and you can see the parking and the travel lane just swapped positions, and the William O Douglas Trail and the trolley swapped. So when we added the online engagement from the second phase, trolley moved up several spots, and the travel lane moved up. One of the other important questions we asked in this survey was, you know, how do you use the corridor currently? And this is the breakdown of that when you combine both online and in-person. So vast majority is personal vehicle use, though a decent amount walking. A lot of that, as been mentioned before, we do see a lot of families and kids walking to and from school fairly regularly.
All right, okay, we are nearing the end. So one of the things I want to point out is, this is an exhaustive public outreach effort. I have never done this to this level. You have more information than I've ever given to any other governing body. So...
Thank you.
It took a long time to get, wasn't cheap, but I think it's very valuable in helping you to formulate the direction that you want to give me on how to proceed with this project. I think the second survey and public outreach effort really reached the broader city of Yakima residents, right? We saw in the map that, in those maps earlier, the variety or the locations, right, that were all around the world, who commented on this. They are not the taxpayers who are actually going to pay for this improvement. The city of Yakima is. And so that's why this effort was so important, is I wanted to make sure that you heard from the city of Yakima residents as best as I could, as best as I could do. Okay, so, next steps. So I wanted to remind you that these are the design elements, right? Councilman Glenn, you had mentioned earlier about the sidewalks, right, whether a bus sides of the road or not. I don't know, because, you know, on one, you know, when we only have a 60-feet ride away, it might only be one side. Plus, we gotta, we may or may not have to deal with the William O Douglas Trail, depending on what you direct me to do. Sidewalks, you know, on an arterial, our standard is seven feet, but on a residential road, it's five feet. So if you go with a couplet, I might be putting seven-foot sidewalks in. So there's a lot of different design elements, right? Whether the lane is 12 feet, or 11 feet, or in some cases, 10 feet. Those all matter and will be influenced directly by the decision and direction that you ask me to go. So here's a list of these elements.
Bill?
Yes?
The driveways. What does that mean exactly? You're not going to actually put driveways in people's, or, I mean, how does that work?
So driveway, you're right. Most people already have a driveway, right? Primarily, this is gonna focus on the industrial portion, right? They can't fit a 75-foot truck in a 22-foot driveway, right? They need a lot larger. And so what does that look like in that section? And so we wanted to hear from them, do they need 50 feet? Do they need their entire frontage? Because right now, there is no delineation, right? Which makes it very difficult for pedestrians to walk on that side of the street in that particular section. So that's what driveways kind of is referring to. Okay.
So if we put the Douglas walkway in, instead of a five or a seven-foot sidewalk, it would be a 10, or how would that work?
There, I think there's some options. It may be shared use, like it is basically right now. You know, where you saw the picture that Michael showed with the sign on it, that's, it's shared use, right? It's the five-foot sidewalk. But the direction may be, we want to maximize the William O Douglas Trail footprint, so, you know, we would look at a seven or a 10-foot wide sidewalk, shared use, or if we have the room, a separate. You know, it just kind of depends on the direction, right? I'm throwing a lot of options at you, and hopefully I'll kind of narrow it down at the end. Okay, so this next page is just a quick reminder of the generic options, and again, these are literally just generic plans that you have to look at. These are the same things that were shown to the public. Do not get hung up, I'm sorry, please do not get hung up on the, on the actual dimensions. Those can and will change. Okay, so I wanted to come back to the funding, just to remind you of where we are. So Michael talked through the project costs. Those are where we're at today, right? Obviously, there are things that could influence that one way or another. Inflation has seemed to kind of mellow out, so I think if we move forward on this project in the '27, '28 construction season, as I currently have planned, I think these will be relatively close. On the funding source, we already talked through the TBD, but I wanted to give you a reminder of exactly where we are, and that there is a shortfall that may or may not be filled with the remaining time before construction, depending on the direction I get. All right, so, council's role, quick reminder. I, we have given you a ton of community feedback. You get to dwell on that and figure out what to do with it, not only from us, but from the other folks that you heard here earlier tonight. I'm looking for direction on which particular elements that I direct HLA to include in the project, and then any particular restrictions or constraints that may be associated with those elements.
I'm kind of wondering, would we go, would there be lights? I think we have a roundabout at Walnut and Sixth. We have a light at Yakima and Sixth. The big one that I'm wondering about is, you know, you got the old 410 highway that comes and winds around, and the Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue are actually really close together. Is it gonna just go in like a normal street anyway, or there's gonna be some redesign of that little, you know, wind about that you have to make? That was the original 410 highway route, and it's a little bit outdated now, and I'm thinking, okay, would you leave that the same, or what do you envision there?
Okay, I think you asked two things. One, about illumination. Yes, illumination will be included. We also heard some, I'm gonna expand on that just a hair. We also heard some comments regarding the intersection and intersections along the route, and if there are any improvements that can be made. So we would be looking at what those look like, right? We might, we'll do, you know, signal warrants and analysis to determine if signals need to go in, and then any illumination would be, would meet current design standards. So I think that answers that question. The redesign of Sixth Avenue will be done according to, well, I should say, will be done to fit in the elements that we need to. So if that means there's changes in alignment, and what I mean by that is move it around a little, basically like what we did at I Street, you may not notice, but at I Street and First, we actually took the angle and reduced that quite a bit, even though it doesn't feel like it, we did. And those kinds of things, those kinds of elements and designs would be incorporated into this. Don't know yet what I'm working around, right? Am I working around the William O Douglas Trail? Am I working around the trolley? Am I working around six-foot sidewalk, 10-foot sidewalk? Am I working around a bike lane or on-street parking? All of that has to play into the actual design of what it looks like. Does that help you? I know I answered that with, it depends, but, right?
Yeah, I go back to the Douglas Trail thing, you know, the part of it is, okay, if it's ever going to happen, it needs to happen with this project. And is there enough interest, or are we far enough along that we even want to pursue the option? Because I know that trail, I don't know, was the vision to have a walking trail all the way up to Mount Rainier, or is it, or a bike trail, or is the street all it's gonna be once you get outside of town?
Again, that's the William O Douglas Trail's issue. My issue is what part of the trail falls within the city limits? And so I'm, I'm kind of, I'm between Walnut and River Road. You're asking me questions outside of that?
I'm trying to get a vision of what the Douglas Trail is, whether it's something that's viable and really going to happen someday, or if it's just a dream that we put a little patch in and it may never happen.
I think Sarah wants to talk.
It's already happened.
I would just add that the William O Douglas Trail actually currently exists. It goes, it connects through a number of other trails, a full trail system to Mount Rainier right now. I think there might be some small sections, but it basically exists as a walking trail right now. So there aren't additions that, we're at the beginning of this concept. It's kind of made its way through and goes up Rocky Top, and then to Kluchman Rock, and then onto Fish Lake, and then up to Twin Lakes, maybe, and then into Mount Rainier. So it's, the concept is essentially done. So this is just one small part of the full trail system that already exists.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and again, provide funding, right? So depending upon the option that you choose to move forward with, additional funds may be necessary, and I would be looking to council to provide those funds so that I could move forward with it. I will say that there's plenty of money to do the design. However, if we move along with... However, if we move along with a construction option, that takes additional funds, probably need a little bit more time on the design, possibly, but I definitely need more construction funding. So it has the potential to delay it. I do wanna touch real quick, there was, I think Ken mentioned earlier, about phasing the project. Obviously, that is an option. I will point out that, um, that lengthens the impact during construction, right? So instead of two-years, two-year construction project, it could be four, or six, or however many sections you want me to put it into, right? So there is some disruption there, not to mention inflation does add to the costs. But it is an option, and it might be the best one. You get to decide that. Again, just a quick reminder, I'm asking you not to do the actual design, but just tell me what of those eight things you want me to put in, and any constraints around those?
While we're playing with that, though, you kinda make me wonder, do you have any idea in your head how many businesses are going to be affected? And, you know, I mean, if, like on the north end, you've got all the warehouses and stuff, that's gotta have access no matter what during the construction. But, you know, Yakima, there were, our First Street, there were a lot of people that were very affected in a bad way because of the way it was shut down. Is it, do you see that being a similar problem on Sixth Avenue, or is there not the number of businesses that we had on First?
I think he's looking at those previous slides, because I think there was some, we can get a pretty close idea, but I will say that all of them will be affected, right? Everybody that's on there will be affected. One, the lessons I learned from North First Street, I'm going to try to avoid. I do wanna point out that it costs money to lessen the impact, right? It would be cheap if I could just shut everything off and just build a road, right? That would be as cheap as it could possibly be. Never gonna happen. So it costs money to minimize those impacts. I have to weigh that in the course of this project, and do the best I can in minimizing impacts, moving traffic through the area, and still getting the construction done, right? That's why we wanted to hear, and we continue to want to hear from the, like specifically the industrial section, when is your busy time, right? Are there things that we need to put in the project that restrict the kinds of work that can be done during certain times of the year? Or what needs to be opened? Do we need to have two lanes, or can we do one lane? And all of those things are construction scheduling questions, but it does impact the design a little bit.
It wasn't mentioned in this, and maybe you don't know, because it's not based on the design yet, but how long, if we said, do option one, right? How long is that timeframe? If we, if you had all the money, said, "Go, Bill, make it happen." We talking 24 months? We talking five months? Like, what are we talking here?
You know, I think if you, if you did the, the construction of the trolley, if that's included in it, lengthens that time period, because there's a certain sequencing of work that has to go with that. So I think if you've, if you've got the trolley in it, that's probably in the two-to-two-and-a-half year range. If there wasn't a trolley in it, I think it's in the, the kinda year, closer to the year-and-a-half range.
Okay. So I know, well, it was Phase Three of North First, right? It was, what, 18 months, and we shortened it?
Uh, it shortened to 18 months.
Oh, we shortened it to 18 months, yeah.
Is it actually done now?
There's some punch list items, but it's essentially done.
It's really nice.
Yeah, you won't, you won't see what's left.
But we doubled the workforce, didn't we? I mean, we had them working...
They worked five-tenths.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we did, we did do that to shorten it some, but the fact that, you know, it was a, it was a big project, like this is a big project. It was done in phases, and it was done successfully. Did that increase some things over time? Probably. But it, you know, if that's a good option, am I thinking is to phase it? Because in that period of time also, I think that if the trolley gets their historical national landmark designation, which should happen by sometime next year, I'm thinking at the latest, just in talking with people about that, would make additional funding available for us on the project, yeah.
Um, so, to, real quick, to go back to Rick, your question, based on his numbers, 33 industrial properties, 35 commercial, and about 150 residential properties are along there.
See, that's, I would say that would be the disadvantage, then, for phasing this out, is the amount of businesses and residential properties that that affects for that amount of time. I mean...
I mean, we might, but if you did it in three, then I only do 151, time 33 the next, 35 the next.
At two years apiece.
No, not necessarily.
I will say that my agreement with HLA does not have it segmented out, so I would bring in an amendment to you. But that's, it's, it's doable, most definitely.
Um, I have a couple of questions with the financing part of this. Do we have a tax at all that's dedicated to TBD funds?
No.
No?
Gary says yes.
No, we do not have a tax. The TBD fee is $20 per car tab. We have not enacted the state statute allowed TBD tax.
The sales tax.
Right, the sales tax.
We are going to be talking about that a little bit, at the next one.
Well, then I'll wait.
There you go.
The interesting thing, too, I, was the, the couplet option would actually provide potentially more sidewalk space, which was the number-one thing that the focus group actually wanted, yet the couplet was not the number-one thing. So just an interesting perspective in that front.
Like I said, competing needs and wants.
I'm wondering, the sidewalk, I'm sure is not, we're talking, you're about sidewalks and deteriorating conditions, and I think that deteriorating conditions on Sixth Avenue's sidewalks is an incredible need. And I've driven down there a lot, so I see that. But combining the use of a sidewalk with the Douglas Trail, having all on one side and all together, could be a saving factor.
Yeah, I don't really see a need to make them separate.
If, if the couplet is the option, does, is Fifth have to have anything done, other than street, you know, signs and signals?
There will be some design elements that, and you noticed that Michael added and increased in cost to that. There are some changes that need to take place, right? You gotta make the, make it all go one way, right? So you gotta do all of that. And there may be some other sidewalk improvements that need to happen, you know, and then, like he mentioned as well, you know, any signal changes and things like that. Did I miss anything?
Here's the big stuff.
That's the big stuff. Okay, another one?
I do have another question, and I don't, I'm asking because I just wonder. So the poles and wiring, could that be done at a later date?
I don't, I'd have to ask Stone, I don't know if you know, Michael.
Well, I mean, current, currently, the trolley operates off a diesel generator, so theoretically, it could, and so that's, that's part of why we had those costs separated out. What we have heard throughout a lot of the process is the desire to move back to a historically representative trolley, and that would include the catenary line above it. And so that's, that's why those costs are presented like they are. We originally started not showing those, and then heard the feedback that, oh, this isn't completely accurate, so...
Could it be done?
So it could be done later.
As a last phase later, yeah.
Yeah, it, it could be added at some later date.
Yeah.
I mean, everything can be added later, right? I mean, it's just money.
Those are the kinds of things I think that the trolley could generate, once they're a national landmark, funding for those kinds of things.
So, just a quick note, so our agreement with the trolley, the Yakima Valley Trolleys, is for maintenance and operations of the trolley line. So that money that they generate from the revenue, from all those visitors that they, that they shared with us and that we heard from, goes into the operations and is for their use to operate and maintain the trolley. It is, none of it comes back to us for capital improvements, unless they turn around and designate back some of us. But right now, I think they're using, they need most of it to, you know, maybe to operate what they have.
The line is so short, just going, you know, down Pine Street and back, it's really reduced the usage, but I think that moving in the direction of a historical landmark and getting all the way out to Seale are two very significant factors in changing that.
Yeah. The other thing is, real quick, you mentioned the poles on the side. Those are all, you know, the current plan is to put all that back in, right? That, that was my direction to HLA. It is a design element that we have to work around, right? Because you stick a pole right in the middle of a sidewalk, you still gotta have four feet on at least one side of it, right? So there's, that goes back to that, we have to figure out how to design around some of those kinds of things.
I know that, as I think about the trolleys, I can remember going out to West Valley and going by Congdon Council on those trolleys, and it was kind of a cool thing. They said, "We can't afford it, we're not gonna do it." And I look at what we got here, it's a very desirable thing, but that trolley's been around for 40 years, and the amount of money that they generate as an organization is minimal. If it wasn't for volunteers, it wouldn't be there. And so as much as I like the idea of a trolley, I don't see any way to justify asking the citizens of Yakima to put millions of dollars more into it. And so I, you know, I'd like to see another option come together that maybe is better, easier to work, having it on the greenway, you know, or, I look at, 20 years ago, when they abandoned the rail line up to Natchez, we should've jumped on the, back then, you know, or something that would've been workable, but to just put this kind of prime development money into the trolleys, I don't think it's fair to ask the citizens of Yakima to pay for it.
I think it's a matter of perspective, because if you look at it from economic development, the opportunity for that to grow in the future in terms of hotels and restaurants, and it's just that, I'm, you know, my question would be, I love both projects. I love the William O Douglas Trail, and I love the trolley. Which one is gonna generate the most economic development? So, I mean, those are some of the things you have to think about.
Yeah. And I, you know, if it was the economic magnet that we're talking about, it would already be obvious. It's not been obvious from the operation over the last 30 years. And I can remember people who were involved with the trolley that got fairly substantial amounts of money and then wasted it, and, you know, there was all kinds of history with the trolley that, and, so as much as I like the idea of the trolley, I don't see any viable reason to move forward with adding that expense of putting the rails in.
Question, on the, you mentioned arterial, which, there was one plan that would make that an arterial, or the couplet? The other ones would not? Yeah, so from a funding...
They won't allow arterials like that right next to each other for FHWA is ultimately who, who, you have to get approval to do that.
What about, like, what you did on some of you was a trucking line aspect. You did some federal funding or different options that way?
That's an arterial.
Because it's an arterial, that's why, okay, all right. I mean, I know it's an arterial, but, and then, I guess my, my, my la, my other question is, from, let's say the, where the trolley ends, once, if we went that direction, and it, you know, obviously, they want it to go all the way out to Seale, have we looked at past that point of, like, is that, are those lines even usable?
So, well, I, I mean, the trolley goes all the way out to Seale, right? Goes out to Southern. Right now, I, I, Michael mentioned, and I'll remind you, that this is the project from Walnut to River Road, right? So that doesn't mean that there aren't issues both north and south of the project. So those, those still remain, and they may or may not be issues that the city has to figure out how to solve, depending on what comes, what happens.
So if we went an arterial road aspect, there would be potentially more funding available for something like that, versus trying to, you know, capitulate all of the TBD funds for this project?
Yes, it, it opens up some additional options. Of course, I'm still trying to find them, right? I will point out that my area of expertise is transportation funding, which I've been relatively successful at, historic trolley funding, or other historic assets, is not my strength, right? We talked a couple of years ago about, or maybe it was even last year, about the Heritage Grant, and that still, I think, is a very viable option for this project. It's specific to the trolleys. However, it's a last-in. Essentially, the requirements on it were, they give us a million bucks, could use it for design or construction, but it basically limited, it said you couldn't go for any other funding as soon as you got it. So that's why I'm saying it's last-in. So, but I think it competes very well. I don't think there'd be any real barrier to getting it, but it's one of the either 5.3 or 7.4, depending on which option you wanna go for.
Those are the kinds of, excuse me, those are the kinds of fundings, I think, that when the trolley gets its natural historic landmark, are gonna open up more than just the $1 million Heritage Fund, so, yeah.
You, you brought up making a decision in June. Is there a decision that could say, "Hey, we're just gonna push this down the list a little bit until we can figure something financially out on other projects"?
Yeah, I mean, of course, you, you could tell me to stop, right? They would be disappointed. But there's, we're gonna talk about the TBD list, and you'll see what's on that list, and everything substantially increased on that list as well. So the, the decision on the 17th is basically twofold. Per our ordinance and per RCW, we're gonna, we have to have a public hearing to approve the scope and/or the budget change according to the project. Either way, whatever I'm told here, that's a change. So the idea is, I would at least like to get HLA designing something, because then nothing else, it can be on the shelf, right? Which then it's substantially cheaper to bring back later, gives us some more opportunity to, to phase it at some point. So all of those, those options are there. They just, it depends. I think that's the fourth time I've said that.
So the decisions that you want us to make tonight, is there anything you want us to decide? We just wait till the 17th?
Hold on, you beat me to my last slide. I'm right there, but I need to finish this slide. So, I left off with, please, council, not the design side of things, and then the, the decision is not tonight, it is actually on the 17th. And that is because, as I mentioned earlier, and I'll mention again later, we need to have a public hearing to, to present this to the public as a change to this project that was, that was originally put on the list. Okay, so then what am I supposed to do, right? All this stuff, what am I gonna do here? So I am supposed to tell them what to do, right? So I'm looking to you to help me do that. Some of it is the lessons learned that I gained from North First and the other projects throughout the city, but a lot of it's from the public comment and public involvement that we've had up to now. And then to continue to be open and transparent, right? I don't expect this to be my last presentation before you regarding this project. This is probably the most robust, because I think everything hinges from this one. But I assume I'll be back sharing other things with you. And then I will continue to seek funding regardless of the source, whether it be state, whether it be federal, whether it be local, whatever those, those options are, that, that is what I do, because they're doing the design, right? Okay, so ultimately, what I want to leave you with is this. Real quick reminder, this is not a trolley project. This is a roadway project. First and foremost, the road needs to be rebuilt. It's a mess. It's horrible. And so, please keep that in mind. So I gave you some options here to look at. So I'm calling this a practical solution. This is from my old DOT days. It's basically the bare minimum, right? And so that is, do the required improvements only. That includes the roadways, the sidewalk, the bike facilities, to... That includes the roadways, the sidewalk, the bike facilities, to, to, whatever those standards might be, right? So, that means, that could still mean I put in the William on Douglas Trail, probably does not mean the trolley, simply because that's not a required element to fix the road. The enhanced improvements, so this is the maximum extent feasible for all those improvements for all the elements except the trolley, right? Because the trolley is the largest, I mean, it, it basically doubles the cost of the project. Then there's the max improvements option, which is do whatever we can fit to the maximum extent possible. This goes back to, Rick, your question regarding dual sidewalk, you know, sidewalks on both sides of the road, whatever the maximum extent feasible is, right? So, where we have a hundred feet, we might be able to do bike lanes and buffers and trolleys and, you know, everything, but when we get down to sixty feet in the industrial area, we're gonna have to narrow that roadway prism up, we gotta deal with the sidewalks, we gotta deal with the turning radiuses of trucks, we've gotta deal with the existing William on Douglas Trail that's on there. So, those constraints really limit that design. But there is a maximum of, extent feasible. So, that's what that max improvements is. And then, there's those same three options, but on the couplet, right? So, I want to leave you with that and say, spend some time thinking about that in conjunction with what I'm gonna share next regarding the TBD list, and then provide me some direction as to how you would like me to proceed.
But not tonight?
But not tonight.
Not tonight, no, 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 not tonight. I, I gave you, we gave you a lot of information, and so did the public, and I think it's only fair to let you, you know, ponder that.
Marinate.
Now, so, right now, the current plan is a public hearing on June seventeenth, at which point, after that public hearing, you would provide the direction. All right, that took a long time.
It did. Oof. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we greatly appreciate your being here tonight, spending the time, sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Bill.
No, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, thank you.
Although, I think Bronson's gonna come up and visit.
Okay.
I just wanna ask, Bill, how long did it take to make fifty-three slides?
I didn't make them, I paid for them.
So, are we gonna have a great big party to celebrate finishing First Street?
Um, at this point, I, you know, I don't have a ribbon cutting. If you want to have a ribbon cutting, I can, they're not cheap.
Yeah, no.
And so...
Free.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're...
Let HLA pay for it.
Yeah, there you go.
Or just get some balloons.
If you just wanna do balloons, I, I mean, we can blow up some balloons.
So, we are moving on to item three D, which is the Transportation Benefit District presentation. Not only do we have Bill Preston, we have our acting city manager, we have one of our state attorneys, Mr. Bronson here, thank you.
Got upgraded.
Okay, all right, so, not being done talking, I'm not tired of hearing my own voice.
This one's much quicker.
Yes, very mu, very...
Are you sure?
Yes, I can do this quicker. So, I do have to come before you every year to present a, a TBD report. Usually, I don't present it to you, I just provide it as a, an attachment, which I did attach to this presentation, but I'm not gonna go through that. So, the other, the rest of it is, I just kinda wanna give you an update on where we are with all the projects, because I did make some major changes to this. So, real quick, the Transportation Benefit District is governed by RCW thirty-six seventy-three, and we did that back in twenty seventeen in the three ordinances you see there. We created it, and then, the first list was done, and then, I think it was a month later, we added a lot of the rest of the projects that you will see on the list to it. And then, so that's just a, kinda looks like a picture of the first page of the report that, that's in your report as well. So, this next pic, I guess I gotta do this, don't I? There we go, one more. There we go, okay. I forgot about that part, my bad. Okay, so, this is the current list as it stands today. There's the street projects that are on top, these are the sidewalk projects that are on the bottom. This list was given to me when I got here in twenty twenty-one, and I believe just the two middle sidewalk projects were completed at that time. Since then, we did come before you one additional project, that was the Third and Division Signal that is currently under construction right now. And we brought that back...
Last year or the year, it might've been?
No, it was the year before, because I didn't do it last year. So, this list is, shows the current estimated cost for these projects. I asked my consul, my on-call consultant, Grayan Osborne, to re-scope these, because I realized that they were way undervalued in the, under, they were not reflecting the correct cost in the, in the current list, and so, I really needed to get an updated cost to you, because I knew it was gonna change significantly. So, currently, it's at forty-four million for the total, and this does include the full price, the full meal, max extent possible for Sixth Avenue. So, keep that in mind. The second page is just kind of a, a quick summary of the changes that have occurred since twenty seventeen. I'm responsible for the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-five changes, but I feel very confident that the last column, which is the one you have today, is much more accurate and reflective of today's costs associated with it. As you can see, many of them went up a lot. And I think, just doing a quick, you know, laugh test or gut check, this is representative of the costs that's associated with this. So, just pointing out, North First Street, which was a, a large one, that ended up being around fourteen something million altogether. We did get eleven point three of that was funded by grants. So, but I am still spending money out of the TBD. I've got the Third and Division, I've got the North First Street, I've got the Sixth Avenue Design, so I am spending, so, we're not just getting one point six million coming in, I'm actually spending some of it going out as well. So, we have, six of those projects are complete. I already shared with you the ending balance from our previous presentation and, and the expected revenue. So, the last two slides, I'm gonna basically let Bronson speak to, but this is, kinda goes back to the question you had regarding funding and/or process.
So, I'll try to keep it quick and simplified, because when you get into the details of the TBD, it gets rather complicated. Essentially, under thirty-six seventy-three, there's certain projects you can include in the Transportation Benefit District Project List. Counsel adopted some criteria to consider some time ago. There are the different forms of funding, which I think have been presented over time. And then, we have a material change policy that's required by statute, council passed that by resolution in two thousand and nineteen. So, essentially, anytime you want to modify the list, you have to have a public hearing. Anytime there's a material change in cost, scope, or schedule, you have to come back and have a public hearing, so the public has input on how to address the change in cost, the change in schedule, or the change in scope. So, that's why Bill kept pushing, pushing off the questions about what do we do, because you can't make a decision until we have that public hearing. And that's as simple as it can be.
So, the idea is that the public hearing on six seventeen for Sixth Avenue is this same public hearing. It's, it's basically accepting the list, and then, you just get to tell me what Sixth Avenue looks like on the list.
If we wanted to add more to the list, do we do it then?
You wouldn't be able to do it on the six seventeen, because we need to have something to bring forward.
So, you have to, the trips, the project list has to be advertised to the public if you're making a change to the actual list. So, there would need to be some discussion on what that list looks like, some direction from counsel that it will or will not include certain things, and then, that list gets public, published to the, to the public for consideration at the hearing. Right now, I think the public hearing is limited to the North, the Sixth Street issues, and then to address the cost as to the other projects. So, I think the public hearing is just gonna be one general material change issue incorporating all of the cost increases in Sixth.
How often do we do this then? Once a year?
Only as needed. So, if Bill could keep inflation at zero and the project costs the same, we would never have to come back.
He is kind of a miracle worker, I wouldn't put it past him.
I would put it very well past me.
So, we would just, as a council, we just need to make, basically, a motion to add something to it at a future meeting, which would then set that out in the process.
We, I would recommend, if you want to add to it, that we, my recommendation would be is to get through what we have now, and then, once that's done, we can address if we wanna put different projects on. That would be my recommendation. You could do it now theoretically.
Like, get through the entire list of forty-four million dollars?
No, 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 like...
I was like, okay, cool, it won't happen then.
Discuss the project scope, schedule, or cost on what we currently have, and then, once the council makes decisions on North Sixth and the other projects that are over, then we can come back and talk about if you wanna remove and/or add projects to the, to the list.
Gotcha, sounds good.
Madam Mayor. Minus some questions, I'm kinda on the same topic. I don't know if you remember the conversation we had during my one-on-one, myself, Gary and Vicky, about, is the alleyway anywhere on here, or is that something different for the TBD, Bill?
Alley's are not currently a project on the TBD list.
Okay.
I've been funding alleys through a YVCOG grant, CMAC grant, congestion mitigation air...
Okay, was that what? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
No action, no action, I'm done.
Oh, you're just through talking, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Finally.
He's done.
Bronson, if there's anything else you'd like to say to us this evening?
I'll be back for the public hearing.
I think it's interesting that Bronson's the attorney for the TBD, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah, how do you add that to...
Two thousand and twelve, when, interesting history, and I, I know we're late, but council adopted TBD in two thousand and twelve, had a project list, could not agree on a funding mechanism, so I think we're the only jurisdiction in the state that actually dissolved our TBD, and then, in two thousand and seventeen, brought it back and reestablished it and then created a funding mechanism. So, in two thousand and twelve, I was asked to work on the TBD, and here I am, twelve years later.
Still doing it. Okay. If there's no other questions or discussion by council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our next council regular meeting on May twentieth, here at five thirty PM in City Hall chambers.
A second.
So, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and second by Councilman DiCio, to adjourn to the next City Council regular meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty PM here at City Hall. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.